Yes, sir.
All right, it's 9:30 a.m., 13th day of November. We'll call a regular session of the Somerville County Commissioners' Court order. Let the record show Larry Holsey, John Curtis, Danny Chambers, Kenneth Wood, and Don Cranch are all present. Would you join us in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to take that flag. I pledge allegiance to the league, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
You may be seated if you like. Larry, would you say a prayer for the court, please?
Father in heaven, we thank you for this day you give us. Father, we pray for the people in California, the fires that they're having, and Lord, that they may look to you for answers. Lord, we pray for wisdom here on this court. May your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, item number three, approve the minutes from the previous Commissioners' Court meetings.
I'm calling two meetings, one on October the 9th and one on October the 26th. Make a motion to approve those meetings.
I have a motion by John.
Take it.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussions? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number four, Michael Lewis. Michael, would you like to come up here to the microphone? Would you mind making sure that the red light's on, Michael?
Down at the base.
Right at the very bottom of the base.
Okay, it's on.
All right, item number four, discuss take action on City Glen Rose request for sanitary control easement on county roads within 150-foot radius of well number four to be drilled just northeast of the intersection of Brian and Sixth Streets. All right.
Judge Chambers and members of the Commissioners' Court, thank you for the opportunity to address you this morning. The city had a well that has a failure and it's going to have to be re-drilled. In the past, the city obtained a sanitary easement from you for the well, but the new well's going to be drilled a few feet away from where the previous well was, and so we need to modify the boundaries on the sanitary easement. And the sanitary control ease, that basically just puts some restrictions on what can be done on property within that 150-foot radius. It satisfies TCEQ requirements. You can't have a feedlot there or something like that that could contaminate the well, so I hope you'll consider granting us that easement.
Will you like to get it drawn up, survey, however that's going to be?
We will have the documents and it'll give a reference of where the well is and what the arc is, and I have a map that will show the boundaries of the easement.
So Commissioners' Court agrees to move forward, then we'll get the documents at a later date, bring back your proof. Okay?
Yes.
Do you have a question, John?
I have a question. I thought y'all were on county water.
Yes, sir. The city wants to maintain the wells as a backup. In the past, I know that the cities had to operate off of the wells when there were some issues with the water district.
And don't y'all like have files that you fire up every like once a month or so anyhow, just to make sure they're still in good operating condition?
Yes, sir. They exercise them and make sure that everything's operational.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry to move forward granting the city the easements for their new well number four. I have a second by John. Do we have any further questions or discussion for Michael? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number five, I think this is brought before the city council and they sort of put it on hold till they had a chance to talk to the county. Discuss take action on City Glen Rose request for input on the possibility of prohibiting parking along both sides of Texas Drive in the vicinity of Expo Center. I'll let you explain that one, Michael.
Yes, sir. As I understand it, some citizen or citizens had made mention to one of our city councilmen about concerns about driving through that area when there's pickups and trailers parked along the sides of the road and had asked about the possibility of putting in no parking. The city council began discussing it, and they decided that it'd be better to defer taking action until they have some input from the county because of your Expo Center there. I believe the city council doesn't want to interfere with your operations and would like some input from the Commissioners' Court as to what you think would be appropriate. I know the greatest level of concern seemed to be on the portion of the street where it begins to go uphill, so we'd like some input from you.
Like pass the soccer park on up around Texas Drive?
Yes, sir.
Frank, what impact do you foresee if we were to restrict parking along that area?
I don't see any impact when you start on a grade, because a horse trailer is not going to park on that grade. There currently, I think y'all put signs three years ago out in front.
On Bo give?
Yes, on Bo give. It hinders 10% of people, because it's typical that someone's going to pull in and park there and come in and check in, and they're not parked there for more than 10 minutes, and then they'll even go to their RV spot.
So we're talking about past the entrance of the park, up the hill?
That's the place of the greatest concern. There was discussion about no parking along that whole area, but that's why I'm here today is to get some input from.
I don't see any problem in past the entrance.
Past the soccer park?
Up the hill.
Yeah, I don't either. You've got one sign down there right across from the extension office, and I don't know that that's the only one that I saw on Texas Drive. But I think that that with us little RV park crossroad, you know, it'd be bad for us to try to keep our people from parking there, and who's going to enforce it, you know? That's the thing. Our Echo people don't really have time to get out there and make sure they move people out of that spot. But I don't see any problem with it from the...
And you're just talking about one side of the road?
I believe it was, the consideration was both sides, especially where you begin going up the hill.
Yeah.
Well, like Kenneth said, we've got RV there.
But if you get past the soccer park entrance, you're away from where most people would park anyway, I think.
As long as it's past the fire hut.
So should we make a motion to what the county would like to see done? What do you direct us here? Andy, what do you think? Mr. Lewis?
Y'all just been asking for input and not action.
Okay. So now that you have our input, I guess we can not take any action on this, and you see what the... Is that good to do, Michael?
Yes, sir. I will convey your input to the city council.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time this morning.
We'll have to take it on our part. All right, anything else, Michael?
No, sir.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And whenever you get your survey documents drawn up, you will just send them to me and I'll present them back to the court, and then we'll get them filed with the court office. Thanks a lot, Michael. All right, item number six, discuss take action on emergency preparedness membership dues for FY 2019 to Cobb. This was included in the budget and approved in the budget, but brought it back to you before we actually paid it. It's for, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, from January 1, 2019 through December 31st, 2019.
We have $5,200 budgeted in that particular line. How about what the...
Five thousand. Five thousand. And the reasons came about this year, we've been leaning and using them pretty heavily. Dwayne serves on board, I serve on board, Brian serves on boards, plus we received or will receive about $10,000 for that screen, and then we just received, I forget what, Brian. Dwayne brought you a check the other day, $2,500 for something, yeah. But anyhow, I need to get approval before we pay this bill.
Make a motion that we approve the emergency preparedness membership dues for fiscal year 2019 with MCT COG.
I have a motion by John. Take it. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number seven, discuss take action on resolution pointing member to the initial 911 district board. I don't know if you remember, a little over two years ago on April the 18th, we passed a resolution for the creation of the North Central Texas 911 Communication District. It is now taken effect. The board will be seated, I believe it's December the 5th. I currently serve on the board. If you want me to serve on the new board for the new district, then I need to, we need to adopt the resolution appointing me to that board. If you don't want me on that board, then we won't adopt the resolution.
I'll make the motion. You're on the board.
I have a motion by Larry for me to continue to be on the 911 board. Second, I have a second by Kenneth.
Give me due as judge or for continues, or is this just for a year?
I think it's just, let me see here, resolution, because they're going to rip point April 16th.
Because you'll be there for four more years.
Yes, December 5th, 2018. It doesn't say exactly when it was filed. I believe it's two-year terms, but I don't know if it's December 5th.
I don't have a problem with being there, but I just ask that question.
No problem. All right, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Michelle, would you mind after you file this to email the committee?
Yes, sure.
And how we know that for them?
Sure.
We're supposed to have it by the 16th. Just that's what I'm hoping for. All right, item number eight, discuss take action on fire recovery fee schedule for the fire department. Mr. Lucas been over this, Mr. Watts have been over this. Mr. Watts, I'll let you and Andy describe exactly what is upgrading the fee schedule.
You want to flip a coin?
Yeah. This, the fire recovery is our billing service that takes care of our fire department, and so this is just simply updating their fee schedule of what they're going to be billing.
And I believe it's also been modified where it has like a 2% per year, where we don't have to come back and do this each year.
Inflation modifier. And of course, we're still doing the no balance billing to residents. This is only so that it's tagging if there's insurance coverage.
Like what I want.
This is the company that we got hired to collect for us, right?
Yes, sir.
They're the actual builder.
They are not EMS, right?
Correct. This is just for fire.
And they're two separate entities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Or their fees about percentage of...
Yes, sir, and you know, they only get paid on what they collect, and so they have to take care of all of that.
I'll make a motion that we approve the fire recovery free fee schedule for the department.
I have a motion by John.
Take it.
I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion, maybe Andy, I, or Brian Panzer.
Questions go to Andy, guys. I made the first question.
It don't look like Andy's going to talk to us this morning.
We're going to call this Resolution 1001, which deals with the fire recovery fees.
Judge, is there a copy of that online scanned in already, or are you going to sign?
Yeah, I've got it right, right.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against, zero abstain. And it's got a place at the bottom for you to protest. All right, item number nine, discuss take action on contract between One Source Toxicology Laboratory Incorporated and Somerville County Probation. I believe that's probably for juvenile, isn't it?
And it's simply renewed our current hinder, and this is paid for our juvenile probation funds that are provided by the state grant.
Good deal. So do I have a motion to renew this contract?
No, I make a motion.
Sir. I have a motion by Kenneth, a second by John. Any further discussions or questions? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Michelle?
Sure.
Before we bring this to you, I'll let Heather look this over and see if she wants to sign it as a director or how she wants to do it. I talked to her today. All right, item number 10, discuss take action or approve additional responsibilities required qualifications of Road and Bridge Secretary. I don't know if that's Paula, if that's Brady, if that's Commissioner. Okay.
All right, I'll take it.
All right.
Our county born secretary got certified to do set tank inspections, and we've always had to, so anyway.
So we need to authorize Paula to redo the job descriptions, is that what we're doing?
I think she has. She'll come up with something.
I haven't.
Okay. I've talked to her about it, anyway.
It's for the court to directly that they want to make that decision.
So would any motion for that to direct you?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it.
Sir. I have a motion by Larry to direct Paula to revise and update the Road and Bridge Secretary job description. Is that good enough? And I have a second by John. Do we have any further questions for Larry, or Brady, or Paula?
Will that include compensation?
That's the next, next thing that's coming up in there. And it should have said secretary on that, not Road and Bridge.
All in favor of said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 11, discuss approve Road and Bridge increase secretary from 3I to 3K, is that correct?
Yes.
All right.
And so she's still going to be secretary? Is that what your point? So can we make a motion as it's written?
Yes, you can.
Can I make a motion?
I have a motion by Larry to increase the Road and Bridge Secretary from 3I to 3K due to more responsibilities.
Effective.
Effective.
Whenever we can.
Next paper?
Next paper?
Well, you can't, your concern is, what's the right thing to do?
It would be the first day of the beginning of the paper going forward. Yes, yes.
Okay.
I second that motion.
So what, you go to the date? Okay, I have a motion by Larry, I have a second by Kenneth. Do we have any further questions or discussion?
Yes, going forward, I may not ever have the opportunity to do this again, but I think going forward, we really need to plan these types of maneuvers out there. I think we were all aware that this person was going to be allowed to get the certification, but what we failed in doing is to outline the course of action of her getting that and what her job duties and responsibilities would be once that was obtained. And so it's created a unnecessary dialogue. We have straightened it out, but it could have been much smoother, so I'm just saying that we need to probably have a better sequence of events for these type of changes. Correct?
Well, knowing about it beforehand would have been very helpful, yes.
Well, that's exactly what my point being, because there's, I think, a lot of assumptions made that even though the discussions were had, that there would be probably some changes in compensation, it never made it to where it should have made it to.
I think that's part of the problem was we unmoved. Somebody knew that's over the budget in that department, and there's a learning curve to all that, you know, so.
And I'm sure we'll do better for a little while.
Do we know that? I have a motion by Larry and a second by Kenneth. Do we have any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. All right, item number 12, discuss and approve revised job descriptions for Road and Bridge Operator 1 and Operator 2 positions. I guess that's back to you, Paula.
Sure. Brady gave me the honor.
There you go.
Okay, we're basically after the fact. Since we've done away with the mowing crew positions, they're being incorporated to the Operator 1 and Operator 2 responsibilities. And other than that, on Operator 2, their minimum qualifications now include a Class A certification, and then they also need to have the ability to grade road base to road engineering standards, and Brady talked about before putting someone up in that position, he could do like a little test for them, that they have to actually get out there and show that they can accomplish that correctly. That's pretty much it.
That sound good to you, Brady?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the court?
Any motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it.
I have a motion to approve the updated job description for Operator 1 and Operator 2 positions for the Road and Bridge.
I second it.
I have a second by Kenneth. Do I have any further questions or discussion for Paula, or Brady, or any commissioner?
Brady, if you're going to have a qualification, you need to set guidelines on what the qual should be and what it, they should be able to accomplish on the grade.
Any further questions? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Paula, if you're just stay put.
Sure.
Item number 13, discuss and approve revised job description for Elections Assistant. I think there in the budget this year, we removed all of the financing as far as it is administered.
Yes, there's this pattern here of after the fact, so since it's already been done...
You had to follow the money trail.
Right, the Commissioners' Court Secretary will be removed from the title and all of the responsibilities that went with it. That's pretty much it.
Do I have a motion to update the job description for Elections Assistant?
Yes.
Have a motion by Larry? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Don. I have a second by Don. Any further questions for Paula?
So you're not going to have an Elections Secretary now?
No.
Commissioners Secretary.
Oh, that's what I meant.
Right, exactly.
And as aside that, the phone system, if y'all talk with Eddie, y'all can forward phones during certain hours and all kinds of neat stuff, so.
They give it forwarded to their cell phone.
Sure, and only during certain times of the day, and it won't...
Pat said she would be...
Did you talk to Pat?
During working hours, Pat said if they wanted to forward them up there during working hours, she would take their calls, and after hours would be for their cell phones.
That'd be a good thing.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, five, four, zero against. Item number 14, discuss take action on construction, new restrooms facilities at the golf course. This was pretty in-depth. Not many wants to leave this one. Larry, Brian, Dan. We've got three here. One, we built two new men and women restrooms at the pavilion. One, we removed the bell tower and the existing walkway. And the other one is two new replacement restrooms out on the golf course itself. I think there's a lot of discussion which way...
Yeah, I've talked to them, and there's a few things we probably want to do that they've got itemized, but I went overall, it's, the bottom line is pretty high, but if you look at every, look at individual items, it's not all that much.
The issue that we have is the fact that it's over $50,000, and as such, we will be bound, you know, under state law, that we have to actually go out and see a bid or proposal.
Well, I thought we, since they were going to be professional services.
Well, and that's my point. If we structure it in such a way where we're buying the materials and we're hiring the subs, and we're just paying them a fee, then, and as long as that fee doesn't exceed $50,000 in the course of a year, then we can do it that way, but the way that their bid was presented, it looked like we were paying them and then they were paying their subs. So that's going to be one of the things that we have to...
Correct.
To get ironed out.
The Senate needs to be on that certain...
Yes, yes. They understood they would give you the bill. Now, who's paying, we didn't even talk about that.
I can't have it on Friday because I had to meet my 72-hour deadline at 9:30, so we posted it 9:20, but we can have it next week sometime. Or maybe one commission...
I guess we, that can be worked out.
Right, and we just, you know, that's the cheaper way that they...
I understand.
...split it out and...
I understand. I guess we need to decide whether we want to do it. Do we want to go with these prices?
Right. Do we want to take it one item at a time and see where we're at, and then see how it works out as far as the bidding and the savings or not savings, or...
Right, and you know, and then we would also need to look at those individual line items to make sure that none of those individuals, you know, made up more than $50,000 in the course of the year as well, so that we make sure that we're not, you know, because that 50 is a hard number.
Yes.
We can't, we can't play with that.
Well, the individual line items won't mind up to 50.
Right, but if you did all three projects, that's what I'm saying, we just need to make sure that, you know, that concrete, I won't pick on you because that's your trade, but you know, that the concrete sub in all three didn't amount to more than 50.
Right.
Roofing, so...
Electrical plumbing, whatever.
Correct.
As long as one particular sub did not exceed in one year period. And that probably goes for professional fees also, doesn't it, design? Because they've got like 17 on one, 14 on one, and 34 on the other, so...
We are.
Yeah, you're safe.
If the, if the goal is to do all three projects within one calendar year, then yeah, we've got, you know, it's calendar.
So I guess we're going to decide to move forward, maybe we'll decide to move forward on one of them, and if we're headed in that direction, if we're not, I'm not trying to lead the only way to do it. And then we see what we call after that, and see where all the bills come in, see where the money is expended, and then we'll know what to do.
Right. You know, and some of these building materials might be available under Buy Board or something like that that we can bring those in, you know, things of that nature.
Once we get involved in it, we can save some money on our own on materials.
Okay, what action do we need to take at this time?
None the way it's presented. I mean, we really don't have the opportunity because of the way that the proposal came in.
Okay, do you need these people to come in and sit down with you?
Absolutely.
And you're going to make that request of them?
Yes, sir, and...
And then should something come out of that that needs to be modified or whatever, we can do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So no way?
So that's what I was going to say, so call them and see if they move in prime this week?
Yeah.
Because when you come back together in the 72-hour period after we meet, we can move forward from that. All right, so we will not take any action today on number 14. Number 15, open and receive sealed bids for golf course pump station.
We received three. The first is from Professional Turf Products in Ulysses. Flotronics out of Dallas. And the... And the, this one... And this one comes in my phone. From Longhorn. Let me see where they're... Longhorn Incorporated out of Dallas. Recommend that we receive them in closed bidding and take the majority.
Do I have a motion to receive and review the bids removed? I have a motion by John. Thank you. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four. If you'll just let me know when you want to get them back on the agenda, because...
We'll pass these along to Jeff and let him evaluate.
Because I think we're not really going to look at doing it until January, February, so if we get it on December, then we can go out. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item number 16, discuss take action on repairing the next roof, southeast portion of the building, hopefully we got that right. It's actually from the hallway right behind us. When you're coming down the hallway where you enter this building here, it's leaking along that, right out here in the hallway, it's leaking in Michelle's, I don't say site, vault.
Over my files.
And it's leaking in Darlene's, I don't see them in here, Darlene's office in that area. So for Longhorn to do it, which did the front half here, what, two years ago, the price is $39,300. I've asked David to get us other verbals, but for at least two more because of the price it was, and as of this morning about 8:30, we still hadn't received those. So if we want Leslie to reach out to some other people that we've got to bid on this front half, then maybe we can come back to the court once we get all the numbers. I thought we'd have more numbers before this morning, and we didn't get them.
No, that was at Parsons.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He sounded good.
No comments. And Michelle, did you want to explain or give us an idea what's going on in your vault?
Well, it's just, I mean, it's leaking over my filing cabinets, and I know that David came in and he replaced, I think he replaced the tile, kind of see, you know, if it continued. And of course, you know, we've had a significant amount of rain lately, so it does continue to leak over the tiles. I mean, you can see the stains, just it's constant. But he says that, you know, you can only do so much temporary fix before you have to, you know, he said that he did go in and like, I guess, he caulked it, and then he said it just, it still continues. He said it needs to be repaired, so.
This is real, Phil? Uh, yes, it's like what they did on the, that last roof, last re coating, and I can make copies of that and hand out to everybody.
Flat roofs and of course that cold joint, that's...
Yes.
Neither one is good, we got both.
Well, we connected two buildings and built another one.
And the flat roofs are horrible.
If this is definitely what it looks like it is, it seals everything, so, and it's very, and not, I don't know if right or wrong, we're stopping that.
Do they have a square feet on that?
Uh, let's see here. Gives the direction, gives the address, five plus five, one and a half per square foot. I guess I could probably break that down, one and a half gallons per square foot. No, we may need to call and get the exact square foot.
Yeah, we want to know how.
Because it just talks about...
The area.
What they do. And it is this entire facility here, this building that was the old grocery store, but we'd have to, yeah, get square foot from it. Because it's from where it enters this building, the hallway, and then the entire building. The only thing I can say about this company is, you know, when my office kept leaking after they repaired it, they'd come back three times and cut it out till they finally got it right. So if you don't mind having Leslie call, see who else we got to bid on that building?
Sure.
And we'll, I'll bring it back in December, and we'll go again. Hopefully before winter, maybe.
We got, we got to get your buckets down.
We did, we got the buckets out of the ceiling out of the mess.
What kind of ceiling you have in your vault? I mean, is it, it's not sealed off? You just got a...
I mean, well, it's a vault, so it's cement, but, you know, from the inside, of course, it's just got the tiles like that, so it's, it's draining in there. I don't know, he said it's just like trickling down.
Well, that's around stuff like if then these other buildings in the city, stucked like we did Hardee's and this, right over the vents and all.
Yeah, and the Sonic Log is about 10 years ago.
Well, the bank, before we come in office, it seemed like it was $35,000.
Wow. Yeah, this was $39,000 on this one particular bid.
Yeah, bank going, probably about half the size of this roof.
So the action there is to get some more input here?
Yeah, we'll take no action today, and we'll just wait and let them, I'll bring it all back to you one time.
You know, in actuality, and the county attorney can answer this, the three verbals over $5,000 is requirement of the court. So, you know, I don't want to step on legal grounds here, but I mean, the court could circumvent that policy if they wanted to go with this vendor. The 50 is state law that we can't bend, but the $5,000, meaning three verbals is requirement of you gentlemen in our purchase.
For our F P.
No, sir, just the three verbal quotes before we spend over $5,000 is just simply a local policy.
I don't think there's any doubt that this is going to cost more, more than $5,000.
Right, what I'm pointing is, if you want, you could either circumvent your own policy and award this if the county attorney allows that, or we could go to Simpson Shaw's policy, or we could go and get more quotes.
I don't think it'd hurt if I get some more quotes, and I need to get a square something.
Yeah, exact square foot. All right, so we won't take any action on that till we get at least two more verbals.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, hopefully they'll be in writing, I hope. All right, item number 17, approved budget transfers.
Uh, email those to you on Friday evening. You will, you will see that we had to make a couple of changes. We had to give the, all within the same department, with the exception of two. Number one, the clerk we knew was going to order a new module for epiling from NetData, and that was $3,000, so we moved that from contingency to allow that order. And then we put money into the contingency account because what we had budgeted $97,000 for the land purchase only turned out to be 91,497.50, once everything was calculated. So we moved that $5,500 back into contingency since we weren't going to use it there, so.
That's it?
That's it, yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion by Larry to approve budget transfers. Thank you. I have a second by Kenneth. Any further questions or discussion for Brian? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Approved remainder of county bills.
I sent you those reports. In addition, we, we reimbursed through payroll for employee meals, April Camp, $13.06. Terry Kow, $15.52. Glenn Woollett, $7.57. Elaine Woodard, $11.23. The grand total of these that you're approving is 505,532.61. You'll see the, if you looked at your list, there were a couple of notable items. We were making our next payment on the Zerper software, $82,785. And then the other notable one is our final golf cart payment.
Golf cart.
To First Financial Bank, about $89,510.
What was that first figure, 505,000? And what? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So that is the fifth and final payment on the carts.
I make a motion to pay our bills.
Have a motion by Kenneth to pay the rest of the remainder of our bills.
Yeah, I have a second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Brian?
Brian, as far as I can tell, the golf carts are holding up as well as we thought they would.
Yes, sir. You know, we have, we have a couple of things that Jeff has brought to our attention that need modifications, and he was needing some additional help on Friday, and I caught with Commissioner Halsey, and he freed up one of the mechanics at the road barn to go down and help Roy out at his golf course, which is, which is good. I think as long as we kind of do that kind of thing, we can continue to, you know, utilize all of our resources.
Well, this is the final payment, so we got to get some buildup.
That would be the hope, yes, sir. Or, you know, as we talked about at budget time, to maybe selectively increase and cull out some and things of that nature.
The biggest thing I see is just abuse by the folks that's using. That is amazing to me.
curb jumping.
How they jump and tear rear end out underneath one.
Why you never want to go to buy a rental car for your own car is, you know how you drive rental cars, you know, I mean, it's just the way it is.
This is a fact.
Well, they're the ones that drive them, that's how they want them.
Yeah, that's, that's...
That's the way they want them.
And they tear it down. Anyhow, shut up.
Anyhow, I have a motion to pay the remainder of our bills, and I have a second by Don to have any further questions or discussion. All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 19, approved county treasurer's report. I believe we all have seen that this morning.
I make a motion to approve the county treasurer's report.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Susie? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 20. Looks like discuss approve accept sheriff office report, I guess.
Yeah.
All right.
I make a motion to accept the sheriff's office report.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for Tewayne or Alan?
On your calls, are we staying thoroughly uniform, was there any increase, decrease?
Actually, last Friday, our board newspaper and our calls last year to this year about the same town frame, we're down about 3,000. I think that does get you out of that, plus our prosecution, like to count, count for stuff, so the combination of the courts and our control is...
Okay, thank you.
I'd say is decreasing.
Good. All right, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against. Item number 21, receive approved monthly reports from the rest of the county departments.
I make a motion to approve the monthly reports from other departments, other county departments.
I have a motion by Kenneth.
Second.
I have a second by Don. Any further questions or discussion for any county department?
Brian, you sent a P and L statement on both that's going to be up for, for over two, for 2019, for two-year period, you said, right?
Yes, sir. For, when it says 2019, it's talking about the budget year.
Okay. And would you like to... What is, what's your final, what's your...
Well, it's just to kind of keep everybody up to date and to see where we are. You know, we've got the report defined and built, so wanted to use it, but, you know, obviously you see on the, on the expo, you know, that the revenue from sales, October versus October was up significantly. October of this year, $77,171, and revenue in the prior year, October, was 43,828.31. So obviously, that's a very nice and welcome, welcome news there. Golf course, even with all the rain, I was really kind of worried, but you see that October this year, 185.28, and last year was 179.408, so I'm just grateful it was up with all the rain, so.
Well, it seems like we, we are doing better, and the enterprise is working for both of those facilities.
Yes, sir. I would, I would agree that, you know, we're definitely got them on the right path, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for both.
Yes.
Also, the expo had a great...
Yeah.
All right.
Was that one of the highest, one of the highest expos you've had?
I, I believe so, yes.
79,800, one of those.
I told him, probably that's what, that's his target from here on up.
Yeah. Oh, that generated a lot of sales tax for the city.
City's already left, Dan.
All of the times already left us.
All right, I think I have a motion by Kenneth, right?
Yeah.
And a second by Don.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor said motion, that's five, four, zero against.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I have a motion by Kenneth to adjourn.
Second.
I have a second by Don. All in favor said motion, five, four, zero against. Thank you, gentlemen. What do you think, Tewayne?
I got a golf cart for each of them.
Oh, yeah?
I don't know who that might be the best one for, but isn't... Everybody's sitting here like, oh, those guys tearing up the golf carts, jumping cart paths and stuff, and so, you know. How come y'all, we don't have their, I don't know, when they rent carts and whatever, to have your driver's license information and backcharge them about two times, all that stuff, and quit?
Have it. We did try to charge one.